Email, they can have meetings on their own and promote their campaign. So this has been very beneficial. It's helped us to share with organizations this year that one time had not been a part of an employee campaign or knew very little about United Way. So this has been very helpful. What is United Way? There is a little bit of a misconception in the community. People think we're a referral service, much like 211, or that we hand funds directly out when people call us in need. And we do not do that. United Way is a fundraising agency and we take those funds and we allocate those to local social service agencies here in Fairfield County that fall within our three bold missions. So as I was saying, those three bold missions that we support here locally, an agency, a social service agency, or an initiative that falls underneath education, health, or income, that's our focus. And this is what I want to spend some time sharing on. There are 25 local organizations that we support financially. We have allocated $900,000 spread out between these 25 agencies. A lot of these agencies you're familiar with, some of the smaller ones you might not be familiar with that have been added in recent years, like Hardbarker Impact Industries, really feeling, filling in some needs where other agencies can't. Hardbarker offers free beds. They, they build twin size beds and will include the mattress and all the bedding to go along with it, no questions asked. You just call, they get that done for you. They also run a car repair. So they're falling in where a lot of other agencies can't get car repair. This is a huge need. We need to get people back on the road, back to their jobs, and they are filling that need for us. They do have currently 14 people waiting for new vehicles. They do see some vehicles just come in that they absolutely cannot repair. And they work really hard to work with other organizations and get those needs met as well. Foundation shelters is another one I wanted to point out. If we, if United Way hadn't stepped in to help this organization, last year they were going to have to close their women's part of their shelter. They do not get quite as many women as, in the shelter as men, but last month, well, in September, they did serve 17 females. So that's great that we could step in and help so they could keep that wing of their shelter open. Why is it important to share these agencies that we support? When we go out and ask for donations and we make these presentations and go into businesses, we want our donors to make a connection. That's how I fell in love with United Way. There are actually four or five agencies that supported my family throughout the years. So it's really important for us to share and get the message for all these agencies out so our donors can make a connection, find something that means something to them. And you can designate your dollars. You can actually designate your dollars to any 501(c)(3) in Fairfield County, but we really like to see when you find something within our 25 agencies that we support and contribute to it. So traditionally, United Way has been supported through employee giving. You might be familiar with our fair share. That's a dollar, that's an hour of your pay each month, and that gets you into a fair share competition, drawing. This year, we increased the, the prize money to 10,000 from 8,000 last year, and we've increased how many names we're drawing, so we'll be able to bless more people this year. That's traditionally how United Way has always based their giving, but obviously we have made other arrangements and advancements with text to give, a QR code where you can give directly, one time giving. You can set up reoccurring on a debit or credit card as well. Just discuss the fair share giving. We're excited about that. That final drawing will be in December down at the United Way office. So even if your name's not a lucky one that gets drawn, please come support. We've already had some names drawn with some of the agencies, Job and Family Services. So come support those staff members, and we're going to make a big event out of it, kind of like a game show this year, so it should be fun. I want to spend some time talking about some programs really important to me. Our internal programs at United Way, these are programs that we actually raise funds for and we actually support these and organize and run these programs. Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, huge program in Fairfield County, and it's really taking off. It's an expensive program. It is free to the families, and that's the important message to get out, free to the families, but it's not a free program. It's a very expensive program, but we are blessed in the state of Ohio to have a governor that supports this initiative and has worked really, really hard to get this program in Ohio really off and running. The state currently has about a 16%, 60% of eligible children are registered for this program, and I'm happy to say, the slide says 50%, but Fairfield County is currently at 59%. It's growing every year. That being said, we do currently have a waitlist with about 100 children, and I do not like having a waitlist, but unfortunately, we have to raise the funds to continue to add. It's an expensive program. It can be a little difficult to budget for it just based on, we get that invoice at the end of the month, and it's postage is always, it seems like it's different every month, based on the weight of the book, the type of book, the size of the book, and postage is going up all the time. We are blessed, like I said, that Governor DeWine does pay 50% of this, but our half last year for about 55% of eligible children being served was 70,000. So it's an expensive program, but it's such an easy program to get involved. So I like to encourage, if you've never gave to United Way and you want to find a program to get involved in, Dolly's is such an easy way to get involved. $26 a year puts a book every month for one year in a child's hand. If you get paid 26 times a year, that's $1 of pay. So we are really pushing this this year. We've had the, we've been blessed to have Board Member Nathan Hale, Superintendent Really Campaign, and we've brought on school districts that have never participated in campaign before that are now participating, and they are all making a big push for Dolly's. So I do see big things happening with this program this year. Another program, United Way started a few years back was Feeding Our Future. This sends meals home on the weekends with local students. We worked with several agencies on this and most recently have gone in partnership with the Victory Food Pantry at Connections West, and they are running this program for us, and we contribute a significant amount of our funds to this program every year, too. Last year, we served 889 students in 13 schools. Nine of those schools are right here in the Lancaster City School District. We served Burn Unit in Amanda, and this year we added the entire Head Start program, are currently working with two other school districts out in the county. These students receive eight meals per bag, and each bag has a value of $30. You will see this program in the next year transition from Feeding Our Future to PB Enjoy. That's a program that Victory Center Food Pantry was already running, so we've kind of combined them and will be transitioning the name. Another program very near and dear to my heart, and I, I had no idea until I joined United Way as CEO last year, how much I had fallen in love with this program, but believe it or not, it's the tax program. And yes, Garrett and I will be doing taxes this year. This is a, if, if you get a chance during tax season, please stop by our office and see this amazing program. We've got two part-time tax coordinators that do, do amazing things, and we have over 20 volunteers that have been dedicated. Some of our volunteers have done this program for over 15 years, and they are so excited to return every year. The clients that we have come back every year are amazing, and they're so grateful. We know that tax preparation is going up every year. Last year, I mean, on average, at $300 sometimes to get your taxes done for these individuals, that's a lot of money we're saving. We did taxes last year for a little over 1,200 people, and that was 1.2 million dollars back in tax returns for them. That's huge. Unfortunately, we did have to turn some people away. So we are always looking for volunteers, whether we have some people that just come from work on their lunch hour and do drop off tax returns for an hour or so. So that's another way you can help by volunteering, spreading the word. You know, anyone that has some extra time, we train them, it's all done through the IRS. And our two tax coordinators are the ones that review all the taxes before they're submitted with a very low rate of rejects, and we got very high scores this year from the IRS in our review. Just to share a little bit, this program means so much to the staff. Debbie Allen, our administrative assistant, had a hard time saying no, but last year she took nothing under 150 phone calls a day, and those phone calls start at the beginning of January. By the middle of February, we had the entire schedule through April 15th booked out. So that's a lot of weeks that we have to tell people no or make re, some rearranging and try to squeeze in as many clients as we can. We are happy to announce that this year we are expanding our Pickerington Tax Program, originally housed one day a week in the Pickerington Public Library. We will be working with Fairfield County Board and DD at their Pickerington location, and they have been generous enough to offer that to us twice a week. Our volunteers are excited. We've actually added more volunteers to the Pickerington location. It's going to be a very accessible, easy location to get into. So a lot of our clients that may have had issues previously getting into our office downtown and finding the handicap parking will have the option to drive up there. So we're really excited about that. We will be hosting probably two or three Super Saturdays. This will be full days up there doing taxes, and it'll give us the ability to serve more people this year.
Question on the tax program?
Yes.
Your volunteers, coordinators, ever find a situation where the client's tax situation is so complex or difficult that you turn to an outside accounting firm or something for help or direct them to another?
We are not allowed to direct them or advise them to a specific place, but there has been circumstances that we have had to just tell them that we cannot prepare. It's a difficult, difficult, you know, situation or a little bit more complicated than what our volunteers or even our coordinators are more difficult. Tax returns, our two coordinators have been doing this a long, long time, and they are really good. They will take those over, but there has been some circumstances where they've had to just tell them that we could not help them.
I was just curious.
Yeah, yep. So that's all I have. Any questions before I allow Garrett to come up and share something? Great. Yes, I love it. Okay.
But, you know, Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, that's a big deal because a child's brain is mostly developed between zero and five years old. So to have, provide some reading material, appropriate reading material for that age group is vastly important.
It is.
And to have 100 kids on waiting lists, we need to figure out a way to, so what's your percentage within Fairfield County right now?
We're sitting about 59%. It increases all the time, registrations. We are doing a really good job on getting kids registered. However, when we do get that waitlist, we kind of back off on promoting registration, but our hospital, local hospital does a great job. Every child leaves with an application, if not registered, at the hospital. Lots of preschools, we have lots of the book nook, our library registers kids. So the word's getting out. We, we do a lot of trade shows with the schools, a lot of trade shows up in the Pickerington area, and I'm just amazed how many, we try to register kids there, but it's hard to register because most families in attendance are already a part of the program and they love it. So we are getting a lot of feedback. I feel like we've done a better job this year on getting the word out that this is, there is a cost to the county to run this program or to us, to our agency, and a lot of parents aren't aware of that. So we have seen some parents that have had graduates, grandparents that have graduates, and they come back and become donors to the program. So, and you, you are correct. I believe it's 80% of a child's brain is developed by the age of three. So it's really important to get these books in these children's hands.
So, you know, obviously, 100 shortfalls right now, say that would fill, is correct, for something going forward, you kind of love that gap.
Constantly, I'm out making campaigns specifically just for Dolly's. Recently, the Baltimore VFW post, I, I spoke in front of their board meeting, was expecting to walk away with $1,000, and when they saw our waitlist, they gave us $5,000. So you will see their name on the label of the book starting in January for a few months. So it's catching on. I have a couple other local ambassadors that want to speak to us about contributing to the program, too.
So before you leave here today, can you figure out some ways?
I love it.
$600 that you're, I don't know what that's going to look like, but it needs to happen.
I appreciate it. Please know, we don't always have the 100 waitlist. Kids graduate every year, and so when Dolly's upstate, updates the record and a child falls off, we are notified those children are removed at the age of five, and then we try to get off of our waitlist as soon as possible. Another part of Dolly's that the governor did do this year that has saved us significantly is they are now paying for Dolly's 100% for all children in foster care. So that did remove some children off of our list. However, when those children get out of the foster care program and whether they're placed with families, we have to pick those children up immediately when they are in Fairfield County.
No, I appreciate your work and I'm proud to be a part of United Way.
Thank you. Thank you for serving on our board. We really appreciate it. Your contributions mean a lot. Okay, Garrett, come up and tell them about some exciting events.
All right, so we do have, I'm going to fix this real quick. All right, we do have two events coming up. Next Wednesday, we have tomorrow, we have a joint event with Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Southeastern Ohio. That would be a chili cook-off held in the meeting room at our, in our building, at the city council meeting room, or school board. And city council?
City council.
Okay, cool, there you go. So that is the, to enter your chili is completely free if you cook chili. I know Dolan Few said in a meeting the other day that they are looking for more vegetarian, vegan options specifically. So if you or anyone you know cooks a meat vegan chili, that would be awesome if you could provide that. And it'll be from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. To eat the chili, it costs $10. You get three samples and one full bowl of chili. So if you don't have lunch plans next Wednesday, we'd appreciate it if you came down. After that, in a couple of weeks, on November 9th, we have our annual 5K. That'll be at the Fairgrounds. The race will start at 8:30 AM. Registration will start around 7:00 AM. We really appreciate if you come out. It's a 5K and a two-mile walk, so if you're not a runner, it's okay. I'm not either. I will be walking. If you have any questions about any of those events, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. If you, if your agency, if you have a ton of people that would like to sign up and you want to pay for it from a, from the agency, we have a separate signup link that's different than the one that is on the flyers I handed out. So just stay in contact with me and we'll get that all set up if you would like to do that. Are there any questions on our events coming up or anything else? Sure, go ahead. Just real proud of you. Thank you, thank you. We appreciate your time. Thank you so much for having us.
So the commission sets aside this time for public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the podium and give your name and address, and you are limited to three minutes. Who would like to be first?
My name is Raystein, 1481 Wesley Way, Lancaster, Ohio. And hearing what the United Way is doing for this community and the, we just pray that their guidance will be using the funds for the people that really need it, and we thank you, Lord. Now I'd like to pray for this meeting and the people involved. Lord, be with the people here in this room that are guiding the county in the use of the funds and the directions that those funds should be going. And we pray, Lord, that they would turn to you for that additional guidance that each of us need, so that we would use our resources for the people that need it. And we pray for those that are directing these funds, help them, Lord, to give you the glory and the praise that you so richly deserve. Thank you, Jesus. Amen.
Who would like to be next, please?
Good morning. Stephanie Hall, Law Director and City Prosecutor, happy to be here with you this morning. And just a side note real quick, both of my boys participated in the Dolly's Imagination Library. They got signed up through their preschool when they were three, and both now read at least four grade levels above where they are supposed to, which is fantastic because we know that, that didn't come from my DNA or because of, that was all, you know, learning and repetition that came from getting those books and reading them. And they loved it because they got something in the mail every month. So I hate to say it, I typically designate all of my United Way funds towards the lighthouse every year, but this year I did send them all to Dolly's Imagination Library. I'm very sorry about that, Amy. I know you're on break, and I apologize, but it's, it's all a good cause, right? So I'm here today just essentially to answer any questions that you might have about the prosecution contract that I, I perform for you and for the townships that you assist in paying for that as well. I provided the county administrator with some statistics with regard to what I'm doing and, and how we're, we're moving through those cases annually, and if you have any questions, I'd just be happy to answer those this morning.
If I have any questions. I appreciate what you guys do and do on it.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you. No, and you, the audience explained quite well, so no questions. And, you know, I think it's important that we do get the word out about Dolly Parton because a lot of people aren't prepared of it.
Oh, yeah.
Especially the funding aspect. So anybody in your circles that helped with that $2,600?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else for public comment? Well, thank you for all for coming. Let me, let me introduce a question update. Oh, yeah. I thought we already had one.
I know, right? So we, I believe there's a type two, expedite type two annexation on, just to get generalized today. It's going to encompass election house road, and I just wanted to let commissioners know, I know the engineer's office, like, for me, it's pretty, city, and Stephanie and I have started those discussions. I just wanted to be, that is totally works in. That's it.
Right. We can review one item here. The 2025 holiday schedule is on for the voting agenda today. There is one adjustment being made due to the timing of Christmas of 2025. In addition to the half-day holiday for Christmas Eve and the full day for Christmas Day, we are adding the full day following Christmas, just anticipating that might be a little lower traffic day and a higher volume of vacation requests. So that is time limited for 2025. Highlights and resolutions, the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. There are 35 resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting today. Couple of notes, there's a resolution to reappoint Dr. Glenn Burns to the Airport Board for a term of three years commencing January 1, 2025. A resolution certifying consistency of the Fairfield Metropolitan Housing Authority's annual plan with the Community Housing Improvement Strategy. A resolution approving the Fairfield County Holiday Schedule, as I just mentioned, for '25. A resolution to renew a contract with the City of Lancaster for criminal prosecution services for villages and unincorporated areas of the county, and that is what Law Director Hall just spoke to. Also have a resolution to approve a memo transaction for the purchase of property located at 15 15 Hurry Drive. Resolution authorizing a development compensation agreement with the development company for three speculative house buildings at Violet Township. Anthony, do you have anything on that one?
Yes, so this is a project along Basel Western Road. So just remember my presentation a few weeks ago, it's just right down the street from the H L, this development compensation agreement. All around, I mean, that goes over the sound packages and their payments back to the construction.
Awesome, thank you. Sorry, Rick, I skipped over you and went right to Anthony, but I figured he might have been by, my, my, this year. And a resolution to approve a grant agreement between the Commissioners and Ohio EMA for a three-year hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant. Anything there, John? All right, all right, good. And then from the engineer's office, there's a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement related to Basel Western Road realignment project. This is for Phase 2A. Jeremiah?
So that's what Amy was speaking about, or no, I'm sorry, Basel Western, I went to election house. Yeah, so Basel Western, we're basically entered into the next phase of the agreement to move forward with that project up there for the realignment and the roundabout, Basel Western, so that's what that's all about.
Perfect, thank you. And there's two resolutions also from the engineer's office for change orders. One decreases the cost for the pavement markings contract, and the other to increase some bike quantities for the salt hard pavement. Anything else there?
No, we're just moving through the project. I know a few people came out to our ready last week, kind of got this progress on that. But if anybody else wants to come out and take a look at it, the, the foundation is in, we're getting the T-walls in right now, it's, it's starting to look like something. So it's worth looking at it. If anybody wants to see it, let me know. I'm happy to take it out and show you.
Awesome, thank you. We have a resolution to approve an agreement with Garland DBS Inc. for the replacement of the roof at the Government Services Center. Happy that's moving forward. Thank you, John, for your work on that. And then a resolution approving a change order with gutnet construction for the engineering lab. And on that note, just a reminder, we do have the ribbon cutting on November the 6th at 4:00 PM. A resolution regarding a purchase of service agreement between Eastland Fairfield Career and Technical School and the Workforce Development Services Division of JFS to provide an instructor for GED prep and basic skills, academic enrichment to workforce innovation and opportunity act eligible participants, also known as WE. Oh, anything on that, Cory?
And that's an agreement and partnership that we've had with Eastland Fairfield for quite a number of years and something I thought that was.
It's very nice that you're able to offer that there. And a resolution from the Treasurer's Office to approve proposals submitted for providing financial transaction devices and services. Jump, anything there?
Just the Health Department's adding a new software to go ahead and have individuals pay for fees. Their software company actually has their own processing for credit cards, so to help them, we went ahead and went out with the RFP to get them approved.
Thank you very much. And then lastly, a resolution from the Thank you very much. And then lastly, a resolution from the Utilities Department to suspend the 3% rate increase for water and sewer fees and to increase connect in 2025. Tony, I know this was an outcome from your recent budget hearing. Would you like to add anything?
Hey, Tony, a question for you. You kind of know or anything, you notify the customers that this is actually free. You couldn't put flyers. Yeah, I think it's important because, you know, not normally how things happen, but without some notification, people just.
All right, that's all I have. Calendar review and invitations received.
CFL will have a meeting on October 25th at 9:00 AM at 20 South Second Street in Newark. The Ohio Attorney General is hosting a roundtable today at the Workforce Center. AP Ohio Customer Seminar will be held October 29th at the A and C headquarters at 9:00 AM. The Engineering Tech Lab will have a ribbon cutting on November 6th at 4:00 PM at the Workforce Center. The Fairfield County Family and Children First Council will have their annual meeting on November 21st at 8:30 AM at Alley Park here in Lancaster. Also, what's not on your agenda, but we wanted to note, the employees here in the county are having a United Way super luncheon to raise some money for United Way. That will be held on October 31st at 11:30 on this floor. The following correspondence was received, an expedited type two annexation for 22.08 plus or minus acres from Greenfield Township into the City of Lancaster, a memo from the county auditor regarding the act of demographic statistics and looking at the last decade, her wins of the week, and a then and now flyer. Fees collected from, a report was provided for the fees collected in the Fairfield County Municipal Court Criminal Traffic Division for the month of September. Lancaster Fairfield County Chamber Commerce's Chamber Newsletter was, is also in the packet, a letter from citizens regarding election certifications, information from the Fairfield Perry County Farm Service Agency regarding drought assistance programs, and a letter regarding industrial solar projects. That is it.
Excellent business.
Yeah, last Wednesday, I was able to attend the Fairfield County Mayor's Association Meeting hosted by Mayor McKenna. Had a good conversation, not only about the year past and where we've come with our land use plan, but looking ahead to 2025 and what that association's gonna do. So it was a nice meeting. And then this past Friday, we hosted the CCAO Central District, so 15 counties around central Ohio for a housing symposium, and had really nice attendance at Wigwam. Really appreciate Aunty and all the work that she did to help get that set up. Had a good list of speakers. I think it was a good content. So appreciate CCAO setting that up.
Mr. Davis?
Had an opportunity to do a video yesterday. Am I allowed to say this or waiting for the video to?
Go for it.
So.
Yes, yes.
We had a branding kind of competition there with a number of really neat ideas submitted by the public as to naming the new transit system. Inspired by Commissioner Fix, lobbying heavily for Fairfield area regional transit. The successful entry for is the link. And so there were a number of other good suggestions. And at the last minute, we kind of decided to reward all of the top suggestions with a month of advertising on the bus. So there, like I said, we appreciate the public's help on that. And we look forward to the rebranding and ultimately to the improvement service, which will be a little bit more important than what the name is.
Am I able to buy a month of advertising on the bus to put what I thought the name should be?
Hey, we'll come up with a price.
All right.
$2,600. So, yeah. So I had the opportunity to go with the job fair last week. Quite impressive, but 153.
146, 146 job seekers and 60 employers.
It was a nice crowd there when I got there. Matter of fact, there was virtually no party. It was good. I looked everywhere for, same guy, couldn't find me. And I knew Rick was gone. I was cheesed.
I was presenting something to go out there and it's asked me a text because I'm looking all over and I can't find you anywhere. I'm like, I'm there, Dave, I'm sorry.
And I knew you were, but I, you know, he thought I was serious. But anyway, it was, you know, in years past, it hadn't been the case. And, you know, you have 60 employees, employer coming in, no potential employees. It disheartened, so.
We had a couple of years there where the employers outnumbered the job seekers. That wasn't good.
So I thought that was good. And hopefully the employers found some.
Get a survey house doing that, so we find out how many of the employers hired people called the John Fair, what they thought more, but we got a lot of really positive feedback.
Very nice. Commissioner Davis, any news?
Thank you.
Mr. Fix?
Yeah, tonight, attending calling hours for Ron Craig, he's Fairfield County resident. Ron was a military veteran who was really heavily involved in supporting the Buckeye Lake area and was an avid and consistent supporter of many of our countywide elected officials. He and his wife Trudy have always been great supporters, and Ron will be missed. Tomorrow night, we have regional planning is pulling out their models voting, which we're very excited about. We've got a lot of interest from several townships and villages and look forward to continuing that process. And then Friday morning, continuing with the CCAO on Board of Directors. Go ahead.
Jim, anything?
Yeah, so it's coming Thursday, the State Treasurer's Office is holding a tuning education at Basel Center.
Lisa?
I just want to say thank you to Jeremiah for hosting the rodeo last week. I did have the opportunity to get out there and drive one of those big trucks. And I have great respect for those folks who do that on a regular basis. So just want to say thanks. It was fun and very enlightening.
You didn't, you know, you didn't have the same situation Jeremiah had, actually getting a truck stuck.
No, but my son probably did at one time.
No, I'm the only one that's done that.
I'm sure he appreciates you bringing that up every year. I'm sure there's photographic evidence.
Amy, good to see you here.
No update today. Look forward to seeing the meeting with you at 11:30.
Jeremiah?
So I'll just say that there is an extremely long list of people that remind me of that every year about this time. It's a big deal, I hear.
Oh, no, I think it's cool. We're all made of it, right?
I appreciate those who came out. Lisa said it's, she had a smile on her face when she said that. So we make it fun. It gives people an opportunity to see what one of those things is about safely without worrying about anything. So next year when we do it, I'll invite everybody to please come out, take a look at it, take a drive.
Thanks.
Nothing's cuter than a three-year-old asking if she can get back up into a snowplow. Give it a name.
Yes.
Very sweet.
Thanks for bringing.
Yeah. I'm thinking about when I was very young and lived across the street from a library and I had great access to unlimited number of books. I know that made a difference in my life. So I'd like to put for 1,300 for that 2,600 right today. If anybody wants to join me to get the other 1,300, there's three of you, click that, that's $434 rounded.
I meant it's 600, so.
So you're good to go. So we're not that far away. And I know Commissioner, you said you wanted to have that solved before you left today. So. I want to try that solve.
Because you need the future. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yep. This past week, we held the Making Numbers Count Seminar. We've had a lot of positive feedback about that. I've already received requests from two other departments to repeat certain sections. It was a packed room, very good problem solving. You know, the transit folks did a great job sharing their experiences and how the system has been able to reduce their burden. And I really appreciate the conversations that happened from that. We have shared our materials with other counties, other departments as well, just to see if there's some things that can help. Now, I draw our attention to the media article that was in the Eagle Gazette recently about the changes of population. Now, we are very fortunate in central Ohio to have increases in population, how important that is. There were several comments throughout that article about making sure others are not left behind. So I started thinking about what does that mean specifically? So you see our demographic statistics they shared with you in this week's memo. And obviously, our population is higher, our income is higher, we're a little older, a little more educated, a little less unemployment. We have the experiences of the market relating to housing. So I started thinking about what does that mean to not leave these other counties behind? So we've been reaching out to Perry and a few others and just asking them, what do they do with how they file their abstracts, those sorts of things. And we're learning a little bit about what we can do to help them. And there's a reason to help them because they have overlapping districts. And so the state won't give us our rates until they're done. So we're thinking about ways that we can be helpful. And I just want to encourage and challenge everybody to operationalize that concept. What does it mean to not leave another county behind? And there might be some very small things that can be done, and there could be some big things that are done. I think it's just a good lens to be thinking about. And I think that actually could draw some attention to those very interesting statistics. Yesterday in Columbus at the Association of Government Accountants Conference, I received an honor, an award, kind of a lifetime achievement award. It's called the Public Service Award. I'm very excited about that. It was a surprise and a good company. The two other folks that I knew had received this reward in the past was Dorian with 51 years of experience and Bob Engel, which is the namesake for the Engel system. And just really honored to be amongst that group and to have that opportunity to share that honor with our team.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I have a couple of friends who I met at the Department of Job and Family Services who have since retired and they're beginning a project. And they've asked me to join them in this project. And it's for tours of historical Black college universities and colleges. And I'm gonna join them in this effort. I'm not quite sure how it's going to evolve, but I think we'll be able to sponsor multiple students who are interested in that tour and be able to go to that tour. While there might not be anybody in Lancaster that would take up on that opportunity, there may be some in Pickerton or Canal or other parts of the county who would. So I'm happy to be part of that effort. And you'll hear more about that in the spring, just beginning that. Just really glad that these folks thought of me being part of that effort, because I like to do things like that that are mentorship sorts of things. Of course, looking forward to spend a little more time, keep in touch, folks, a little bit later on today.
Thank you. Tony, anything?
I think you always have something.
I have.
Excited to have the beginning of the year at the Workforce Center this afternoon. Wanted to be the Chamber of Commerce members, but then been away from the workforce, I guess, for, you know, a couple of years now. So it's all, well, one stop shop. And then got a good list of speakers so far for the ribbon cutting. And one of the cool things that I should have brought you for you last night is Director Vansh, who are the high department of Job and Family Services, who was here for the initial open house for the Workforce Center. He's coming back and he's gonna speak. He's bringing this communication scene because they wanted to do a video. So it's always nice to see that and be back and stay alive.
I'm very excited about that. I know you are as well.
And yesterday, it was the first, students did their first day. They loved it. It's nice to see stuff written on the whiteboards in the classroom. It's really cool. They have huge everything.
John, first of all, our seven please.
Cybersecurity training status update. We are at 71%. We have eight-ish days left. So continue to try and get people through that. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll be quickly that we continue to work with the book to relay off this result of closing both factories. We had representatives from the State Job and Family Services to help them filing unemployment claims. That's usually the first thing that they focus on when they, when they stop working. And then we had at least a dozen of them at the job fair, and we had seven of them who have already started the process and pursuing the training program. So we're working with a lot of them. Hopefully they come back and the workforce there is a.
Good timing on the job fair for those things.
Very nice of you guys.
I never got a call last week. And it's a very, two, a really old that they've had at the post job.
So thanks to both of you guys for really putting a full court press on that, beating that, helping those folks out. It's a really big deal that we responded by, we did. So we appreciate that.
Hey, please rise if you're ready. We'll have a joint event. Quite a lot of nations. I believe in them. I quite believe it's by American. And it's true, we're proud of the Christian stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice and salvation. Okay, any announcements?
There are no announcements.
So approval of minutes for October 15, 2024. Summate. Second. Discussion. Dean Demmer, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0.
For both budget hearing minutes for October 15, 2024.
Summate.
Second. Oh, you were here. Discussion. Call call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. The Commissioners, Resolution 2024-10.22.a, a resolution approving the appointment of Dr. Green Burns to the Fairfield County Airport Authority Board.
Commissioners, move items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I.
Second. Discussion. Dean Demmer, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2024-10.22.j, a resolution authorizing development and compensation agreement with roving development company, a Kentucky corporation.
Summate. Second. Discussion. Call call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For Fairfield County EMA, Resolution 2024-10.22.k, a resolution to approve a grant agreement between Fairfield County Board of Commissioners and Ohio Emergency Management Agency for the FY '22 HMEP year three grant.
Summate. Yes. Second, whatever. Discussion. Dean Demmer, call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2024-10.22.l, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement relative to a Basel Western Road realignment project Phase 2A.
For Fairfield County Engineer, move items L, M, and N.
Second. Discussion.
I've been answering pretty questions.
Additional discussion. Call call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For the Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2024-10.22.o, a resolution authorizing approval and agreement for the replacement of the Brook Government Service Center with Garland DBS Incorporated.
Fairfield County Facilities, I move items O and P.
Second.
Discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Resolution 2024-10.22.q, a resolution to approve a memo expense memo received for the cost of personnel for September activity paid to Fairfield County Health Department as a memo expenditure for Fund 7521.
Summit.
Second. Discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024-10.22.r, a resolution regarding a purchase of service agreement between Eastland Fairfield Career and Technical Schools and Job and Family Services Workforce Development Services Division.
Under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, and Z.
Second.
Discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2024-10.22.a.a., a resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriated from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund 2036 Department of Youth Services reclaim fund.
Under Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items AA and BB.
Second.
Discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For Fairfield County Treasurer, Resolution 2024-10.22.c.c., a resolution to approve proposal submitted for providing financial transaction devices and services.
Summit.
Second. Discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution 2024-10.22.d.d., a resolution for suspension of the water and sewage usage fee rate, but increases connection charge fees for 2025.
Fairfield County Utilities, I move items D, D, E, E, F, F, G, G, and H, H.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to thank Tony for coming up with the idea and now executing it. I think it's all done.
Official, this. Call please.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From South Central Major Crime Unit, Resolution 2024-10.22.i.i., a resolution authorizing account-to-account transfer for MCU Fund 7864, Subfund 8313, Recovery Ohio, FY23 Grant.
Summit.
Second. Discussion. Call please.
Commissioner Fix.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for October 29th at 9:00 AM.
Any additional items come before the board of commissioners this time? We will be adjourning and then reconvening at 11 o'clock for budget hearings. So, Mr. President, please.
Is there any, would there be any complication with reconvening at 10:50?
I don't think so.
The reason I mention that is, at the last round of budget hearings, I was given an assignment, and I wanted to brief the commission as to the results of that work as part of the budgeting process.
So we will reconvene at 10:50?
Question to adjourn? Briefing?
Yeah, we're adjourning, then reconvening.
They're separate meetings.
Yeah, all right, so let's talk about that for a second. If it's a second meeting, then it was noticed at 11:00. So we'll reconvene at 11:00. Assistant with the notice, and I'll take two minutes at 11:00 to give my update.
There might be wiggle room in between each.
Sure. Yes, I get it. I understand. Thank you. So any question to adjourn? Second.
All favorites, take a five, a single. I agree.